...minutes, I'd ask you all to join me now in a pledge of allegiance. Linda, would you lead it? Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I would also like to... I would like to ask for a moment of silence for the passing of Danny Ayagada. Danny was our representative on the school committee of Southeastern Regional and stepped down for health reasons and passed away this weekend. I would also like to announce that the... I'd like to thank Jim and Linda and Paul Durensis, who have worked with the craft organization. And as of this morning, the lawsuit that was filed against the town of Foxborough and the Board of Selectmen was dropped, and was dropped with no requirement on the part of the town of Foxborough to do anything. So, I want to thank all those involved for the time and effort in resolving this matter. Citizens input. There's a microphone up here, so if any citizens have a comment, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Not... Okay. I think we have one. Two?
I'm Ann Oaks, and I live on 10 Austin Lane in Foxborough. And I shop at Trader Joe's, and I love the store. And I can't understand why... I can't see a company like this risking their reputation to mess up in a place like this. It's a great location, and it's a great... It'll be a great source of revenue, and I'd love to see it nearby because they don't... Stop &amp; Shop and Chaws don't have everything, so I'd love to see a store like this come.
Thank you, Ann. Next.
Hi, my name's Karen Pierce. I live at 3 Ryan Place. I just have a general statement I wanted to read.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and fellow residents, I have lived in this town my entire life, and I'm proud to call myself a townie. The town of Foxborough is called the gem of Norfolk County, and it has lost its shine. With the two recent issues before this board, it has really opened my eyes to how so many people can overreact. The fact that our elected officials have to worry about their families and homes, and I'm not just speaking about the most recent events, makes me incredibly sad. I don't know what has become of this place I call home. We have elected these five people to advise us on the best decisions for our town. If we don't like it, we have the right to run against them in the next election or vote them out. We live in a democracy where we all have the right to vote, so why isn't there always so little of a turnout on Election Day? If people are so unhappy about what's going on, I would've thought there'd be several people running for the two available seats. Every single person in this town has the right to their opinion and should not be fearful of expressing it. Depending on who you are speaking with, if you are on the wrong side, watch out. I feel that if anyone wants to voice their opinions, there are so many platforms to do so. We are a country with one of the greatest freedoms, the right to speak out freely. However, when it comes to threatening people for expressing their opinions, and those people become afraid of retribution, which is fearful in general, we have a major problem. Let's all take a step back and think about the facts and not jump to conclusions, and work together to bring the sparkle back to this town. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Tim Oaks. I live on Austin Lane as well. Just had a comment about Trader Joe's. I did a little research and found that Consumer Reports actually ranked Trader Joe's as the second-best grocery store in the nation. And if we switch the liquor license from Central Street, all we're doing is adding more beer, wine, and liquor into Foxborough. And as a consumer, the obvious supply and demand seems to work. And as they already agreed to not sell on event days, I don't see why they would be derelict in their sales on a Tuesday night when they're not going to sell on an event night anyway. And at the last meeting, Mr. Chief O'Leary saw no problem with the transfer, so I think there's no better expert, more qualified to Anna than Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Steve Morgan. I live at 17 Fuller Road. As a resident of the community with two daughters, we're all aware of the concerns that go on there at Patriot's Place. I'm sure you are too. I hope you just take the safety factor in your decision tonight when you make any decisions on the transfer of this liquor license.
Thank you very much.
My name is Hope Repoly. I have three young children.
I'm sorry, could you give your name and address again, please?
My name is Hope Repoly. I live at 6 King Philip Place. I am the mother of three young children. I was at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I have to say, I was appalled at how it went and how a town like Foxborough wouldn't welcome a Trader Joe's. They give back to the community. Every other town that has... Trader Joe's has applied to has accepted them, and it's going to do nothing but good things for the town. And as far as the alcohol and people worrying about where they're going to buy it, that is a personal responsibility that we need to teach our children at home, and it's not, you know, the store's responsibility. So, that's all I have to say. I hope those of you that were against it will change your mind.
Thank you.
Jim Sivalinsky, owner of Route 1 Liquor Mart in... Route 1 in Foxborough. In this day and age with the economy and the way it is, it is not easy for this community to make decisions when it comes to attracting businesses out onto Route 1, especially when alcohol sales are part of that decision. We all recognize the popularity of Trader Joe's supermarkets. It is a $10 billion supermarket chain that will be a welcome addition to the Foxborough community. But we also have to realize that part of Trader Joe's popularity and success is selling inexpensive alcohol, and it will be selling it in a very volatile area. When you make a decision tonight on this liquor license transfer, I know that there are many issues for you to consider. In this decision process, please, please keep the safety of the community in mind. I thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Jim.
My name is Shannon Sylvia, 45 Neponset Heights Avenue. And I've never spoken in one of these before, but I'm a frequent shopper of Trader Joe's in Boston. I also am not from Massachusetts, so this whole liquor store thing is a little strange for me from California because I am used to going into grocery stores and having the liquor readily available there. But on the Trader Joe's, I will tell you that there are people everywhere in the store. They're looking at you. They don't want you picking up their stuff. They're very helpful. They're the best-trained staff. And we're not talking Stop &amp; Shop employees. This is a whole 'nother level. This is a different type of employee that we're talking about. Nothing against Stop &amp; Shop.
Make our job easy.
But I don't go to liquor stores, and I don't buy liquor. Occasionally, there's an occasion around the holiday season, I might want to pick up a bottle of something, but I don't because I'm not comfortable. I probably would pick up a nice-quality bottle from Trader Joe's if I was in there for a holiday gift because I really don't drink. If I was to entertain, I might. I don't now. I don't go to liquor stores. I don't imagine people that go to regular liquor stores are probably going to be shopping at Trader Joe's. It just doesn't make sense. And they've already taken care of the event issue, so I really don't even understand why this is an issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Good.
Steve Foster, Garland Lane in Foxborough. First time at a town meeting, fairly new to Foxborough. We've been here a couple of years. I moved here with my wife, and we've got two young girls, 1'7" and 1'5". Again, I'm coming in a little late. I can't... I hear safety. I don't know if it's a... Safety is... Is safety a genuine concern, or is it a function of, you know, market share on Route 1? I feel like the previous person that spoke, you know, safety starts at the home. You know, we have to take ownership for our kids and set them in the right direction. I actually think Trader Joe's will introduce a tremendous cultural benefit. I think it'll give our kids some visibility into nutritional foods, organic foods. I think it's good for the tax base. I think it's good for the town, potentially good for the property values as well. And I just... I think the financial considerations need to be weighed here, and if it's a safety concern, I think that could be a separate discussion that we could have and maybe address those specific issues, so.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no others, I'll close the citizens' input. I would ask Lou to give us a report. You were going to... After our last meeting, you were going to work with Trader Joe's and come back to us with something, so do you want to update the board, please?
I will, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Following the last meeting, I think it was two weeks ago, based upon the concerns of the citizens and some of the concerns of the board, I spoke with Attorney Upton several times about trying to come to some agreement on some of the issues that you thought were the most important, and we were able to narrow the issues down to three and basically agree on almost everything with the exception of a minor disagreement... Not even disagreement, a minor difference of opinion on one of them. And I'll just paraphrase what we were able to agree to. Trader Joe's prepared to agree in writing, if you approve this license, that they will commence sales of beer and wine when the license is issued by the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, or when they open, whichever occurs last, I guess, and will not commence the sale of spirits until January 1st, 2013. Give them sort of a break-in period to make sure everything's running smoothly before they introduce spirits into the regular sale chain. Secondly, they will agree not to offer for sale any container of spirits that contains less than eight ounces in size. That would be all nips, half-pints, smaller bottles that people who tend to have a problem with alcohol might gravitate towards. And the third one is a limit on the sale of spirits on days of games and events. And what we had talked about last time we were here was that they would not... Whether they would not sell spirits on any day when there was a ticketed event during that day. And I put that in writing, and I read it by Mr. Upton a few times, and he talked to his people and came back with a different twist on that, asking that apparently... I didn't know this, but the parking lot where you can tailgate opens four hours before events. And his request is rather than all day being on sales of alcohol, that it be... That it... Sale of alcohol stop when the gates of the parking lot open, so that people still couldn't tailgate. But I'll let Mr. Upton explain that to you as best he can because I don't want to speak for him on that. But other than that, we're in agreement that they would accept those terms if the board were agreeable to grant the license. So, why don't I let Mr. Upton explain maybe the difference we have.
Give that microphone, please, Mr. Upton.
Andrew Upton, representing Trader Joe's. We believe that the spirit of the board's request from the last meeting was to prevent the sale of spirits during large-scale events at the stadium. And we're willing to agree to that. However, given the fact that tailgating does not begin on stadium property until four hours before, that the parking lots do not open, we'd prefer not to be restricted in the time before that. So, for example, when you have Monday Night Football, if the parking lot opens at 5:30, we'll be glad to cease liquor sales at that time, but it doesn't seem to make sense to ban the sale of spirits Monday morning when Patriot Place is operating, just like any other retail facility, and people want to go get their groceries and pick up alcohol or do whatever they do on a normal day, just like a Tuesday, or a Wednesday, or a Thursday. So, that's the rationale. We thought we heard you say you don't want sales of hard alcohol during events, and we're more than happy to do that. But to us, the events don't begin until people get there four hours beforehand to start doing whatever they do.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Questions or comments from the board? Mark, you want to go first?
I believe the board was discussing the fact that we didn't want the sale of any alcohol during the event. It had nothing to do with hot alcohol, beer, or wine. Am I mishearing you, Mr. Upton? Are you saying just spirits?
I thought the last meeting, there was no... There would be no spirits sold, but I could be wrong. That's how I understood.
That's the way I thought it was, too. The discussion centered around the lack of spirits on those events. Does anybody else remember that?
Yeah, I think my recollection was during game events. It was just the spirits that were the concern. The beer and wine was okay.
Other questions, Mark? Comments? Jim?
No, I'm very happy. I know a lot of people worked going back and forth on this agreement. Just a couple of thoughts. A couple of people have come to the microphone now and in the past, and while Trader Joe's here, I hope you don't have the impression... A couple of people had said that we'd change our vote because we don't want you here. I think you heard it loud and clear from the board. Probably if it was any other store, I don't even think we'd get this far. I think there's a lot of respect for Trader Joe's. I know it very well. I've been there. Our concern is alcohol, in period, and if we can come to a... Somewhere in the middle, and I think that's what we've worked hard to do. But I appreciate you coming forward. And to be honest with you, this... I probably wouldn't have voted for or against this the first meeting anyways. We're dealing with other issues where, you know, we don't dot the i's, and then years later, we're trying to deal with it. So, when we're working with a new attorney on both sides, I'm a lot more comfortable when we have the time to go through, especially when it's the ABCC and anything's not standard, to get it in the agreement and work together. And I think these two weeks were very beneficial, and I think you have a better understanding of the concerns that we have. And if you're, you know, not from the area, from California, this is a kind of a unique animal here. We're dealing with a lot of issues at the stadium and the fact that liquor is coming into something that has been problematic. And I spent a lot of time... I've met with Mrs. Sivalinsky, some of the other businesses, many of the police officers, business owners, and there's a concern that some people that say, you know, blindly just say yes because you're a good tenant and you want to still fill up the storefronts. And other people say never because, you know, it's going to tip the carts, and we're already dealing with stuff. So, I think this agreement was crafted very nicely somewhere in the middle, and I hope it works for you, and for me, it works. Thank you.
Lorraine?
I agree. I think this is a good compromise. I did want to ask Chief O'Leary if he could comment on this because last week when we discussed this, and we were discussing the beer and wine and the two-buck-chuck aspect of it, you know, certainly Chief O'Leary said that he had not... He didn't have concerns about the two-buck-chuck aspect of it. But we really didn't discuss the all-alcohol with Chief O'Leary. So, I'd like to hear his concerns.
Please, come down to the microphone, Chief.
And any suggestions that he has for this.
Just to start, April is Alcohol Awareness Month, and it is a concern for all of us in this room, especially those that have children. So, if you could bear with me. I think in listening to the proposal submitted by special counsel in agreement with the Trader Joe's company, I think that we've hit a fair middle ground that protects our public as well as the concerns that the board has. I think the delay of the sale of spirits to January of 2013 is very prudent because it will allow the operation of the store to go forward and give their new employees an opportunity to learn just what type of business they'll be getting at many of the 18 major events that we're going to have between August and December. So, I think that's a prudent step to take so that we're learning to walk before we're forced to run in a marathon. Concerning the sale of spirits, I think that, again, a good step was the limitation on sizes, not to have nips in smaller containers of alcohol that would encourage people to try and smuggle them into the stadium or abuse them at other places. I actually had a further meeting with the people from Trader Joe's about different concerns so that we could work together. A third issue deals with that of identification. Our area is flooded with false identification that's created overseas that is almost foolproof in what it's produced. And they've agreed to work with the police department to come up with a suitable program so that we can guarantee that false IDs won't be able to be used at their facility, which I think is a good step. One of the companies, and I'm not advocating a particular company, but I know one called Advanced ID Detection has developed a very comprehensive program, and we'll be looking at that and other methods that they can make sure that the people that are coming into the facility and purchasing alcohol are not doing so on a false basis. And the final thing, just to mention in the discussions, all of their staff will be trained in responsible beverage service. They've made arrangements with Gillette Stadium that the same alcohol service training that is provided to their staff, the team training, will be provided to all of their employees. So, I think the board has developed a fair solution to this particular issue. I know at one point, they were talking about some sense of an evaluation or review, and I think the board probably thinks of that at any point with any licensee based on performance. And I'll be working with the managers there to make sure that their performance meets the board's expectation.
Thank you, Chief. Lorraine, anything else?
So, Ed, has Trader Joe's agreed to use the special identification equipment as part of their screening process?
It was just brought up today. I suppose when we're going to be in the process of working together so that they have a plan in place to adequately check for and screen for potential false ID.
But it will involve equipment. Is that correct?
Equipment as we move forward. That was the impression I got from the meeting.
Can we just confirm that so that, again, we don't have six months from now of confusion? So, who did you talk to at Trader Joe's, Chief?
Well, we were working with the manager.
All right. Go to the microphone, just so everybody can hear you.
We had the opportunity to meet with Chief O'Leary today, talk about some best practices that he's familiar with in the town. It sounds like there are several options on the table. So, what we've agreed to do is, you know, over the next several months, while we get things up and going, is to review them on our end, see what makes sense for our business and the way we do things. Certainly run everything by Chief O'Leary. But it's our intention as, you know, throughout this whole process, and hopefully you got the impression from us, that, you know, selling responsibly is our main priority, you know, all of this other stuff notwithstanding, you know. Our goal as a company, certainly my goal in my position, and I know Dave's goal, is to make sure we're doing the right thing, and selling responsibly is part of that. So, if this is part of that, we're certainly happy to look into it with the chief.
Anything else, Lorraine?
No, thank you.
Linda?
Well, I know that I asked for the chief to come down and speak last week, too, and I'm glad...
Speak up, Linda.
I asked the chief to speak at our last meeting, too, on the spirit, so I'm glad that you folks have spoken to one another, and I think that it's going to give you time to work with the chief to ensure that you folks are safe, that the public is safe, and your customers are safe. And I would suggest, being the company that you are, that you would look into the best of the best of the best, which would, from the chief's viewpoint, sounds like that advanced ID production. Of course, we can't tell you what to do, but I think everybody would feel safer, especially it's new to you in Massachusetts, anyway. And there's a lot of phony ID things out there, and they're coming up with new, improved ways every day to get what they want, so... But I... I'm happy that we came to this agreement, and I hope that there's a working relationship going forward, so.
Anything else, Linda?
I've done a motion.
Okay. Well, let me... I'll just make a comment. I think it was Karen that made the comment earlier tonight under visitors about the community. And I would say that probably in my first two and a half years on the board, I got very few emails on any topic. I can tell you that on this particular topic, we all know we got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds on the casino, but we also all got a lot of emails on Trader Joe's. People sharing their views positively, negatively regarding the alcohol. I don't recall seeing one that was negative on Trader Joe's, but there were comments about whether or not beer and wine was okay, whether beer, wine, and spirits are okay. And so, I would say to Karen that I think that while at times it can be discouraging, the town has awakened and is more involved and more engaged in issues today than I've seen in the last number of years, as evidenced by topics like this and sharing things with us. But it's obvious to, I think, everybody on the board and anybody in the community that the concerns expressed by so many people regarding the sale of alcohol today. And so, I'd also like to suggest that the Board of Selectmen take a leadership role and create a forum of some type and invite all of the establishments that sell alcohol, restaurants, package stores, et cetera, to a summit whereby the chief, the town manager, the Board of Selectmen, and themselves, we talk about the issues in Foxborough. We talk about... Those issues are not necessarily unique to Foxborough, but we do have a concentration, and the issue's not unique to one place. We know that we've had a restaurant whose license we suspended for 10 days. So, we know it's not unique to just one area of town, but it's so important to the residents and so important to the board that I would suggest that fairly quickly we establish a summit where we literally talk through what are the issues, what are the facts, what are the best practices? How do we share those best practices across all of our establishments? And it isn't just a matter of, as I had a dialogue with some individual, it isn't just putting a detailed police officer outside of a place. It's making sure that all the servers understand. It's making sure all the employees understand. There's a whole process, and the chief works very hard at that. But it's obvious to me that this community believes this is a very, very important issue, and it needs more attention. And so, I would hope that the board would set up a summit and, if necessary, even bring in outside experts to help us and the businesses make sure that safety is number one and that nobody is being served underage and no one's being overserved in any restaurant, and that we can make sure that the public is safe at all times. And that would include inviting the stadium because when we have 68,000 people there, there's lots of activities that go on there and in the parking lot, and I think we need to strategize what other things we can do. So, with that, is there a motion on the board regarding the transfer of the all-alcohol package store license from Central Wine and Spirits?
I think we need to clarify one thing.
Okay.
There were two alternative number threes. One was whether or not the spirit sales would be prohibited all day, and the other was whether it would be only when the parking lot opened.
So, in the person's mode, whoever makes the motion has to clarify that?
Yes.
Okay. So, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I apologize, I don't have the email in front of me, but I think the motion was... Oh, here it is. The first one, that they would commence as soon as the ABCC issues a license. The second one was any sale of liquor under the volume of eight ounces is prohibited in perpetuity. The third one is that the sale of liquor would not happen during stadium events, and I'll make the motion that it is starting when the gates are open. It allows you to open up and then close down the liquor when the gates open at the parking lot. Parking lot gates, yeah. And the fourth one is the sale of liquor will not occur until January 1st. And I think, so people know where that date came from, that was a full cycle of the revolution, all the summer concerts, the NCAA, the UMass games, and the Patriot season. So, that, I think, is where we came up with the January 1st. A little long-winded, but I think those are the four points.
So, your motion is to approve the transfer of all-alcohol package store license from Central Wine and Spirits at 50 Central Street to Trader Joe's at 350 Patriot Place with those conditions you just cited?
Correct.
Is there...
Is there a second to the motion?
With an evaluation.
I'm sorry.
Second?
Second by Linda. Now, discussion. Lorraine, go first.
I... One question about the motion. Was there going to be an evaluation in Jan... You know, prior to that agreement in January?
Is that what we discussed? You'd come back to our board at the end of the grace period for evaluation, more to update us on how things went?
Could you come to the microphone, just so everybody can hear you? Sorry about that.
We had discussed with the chief today, some ongoing discussions throughout the period, not necessarily coming back before a formal... For a formal presentation, but in working with the chief.
Would you mind doing that?
Um... Do you plan to... Sorry. I defer to my counsel.
We'd be glad to come back for any type of status update that the Board requested. We would not want the January 1st date conditioned on another vote by the Board.
I think the only condition we'd have is the behavior in the six months before there.
Right, obviously, if there was a violation.
There's a violation.
When we came before the Board.
There's a lot of other issues.
Right.
Correct.
Then it would be wide open.
Yep. Lorraine, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
I want to, I want to read a statement.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. "Two weeks ago, we as a Board met with the representatives of Trader Joe's to discuss their application and to hear comments from the public. As a result of those discussions, and given the concerns raised by several members of this Board with the prospect of granting Trader Joe's a full liquor license, we voted to postpone this matter until this evening to allow our liquor council the opportunity to draft compromise terms of agreement between the town and Trader Joe's. The intent of that compromise was to balance our need to preserve our public safety interests while allowing Trader Joe's the opportunity to do business in our community. Compliance with the town's liquor regulations is an issue that has been and will continue to be paramount to me during my tenure on the Board. I've spent many hours working with Chief O'Leary, Dave Brown, and all the business owners of liquor-licensed establishments to ensure that our first obligation is and will always be to the safety of our residents and our young people. I trust all of this public safety personnel in our town. I know how thorough Chief O'Leary and his team have been in the preparations for and mitigation of large-scale and complex events at Patriot Place. As someone who looks forward to the prospect of having Trader Joe's in our community, I remain unclear as to why Trader Joe's, with its large number of stores, successfully engaged in business in Massachusetts without a full liquor, a full alcohol license, has determined that our community requires such a license in order to do business. I have heard the comments from the public in favor of, the comments of those concerned with the proposal, and to add another all-alcohol license before us."
Please, just let her finish, please, okay?
"As I said two weeks ago, some form of compromise is needed to bring this issue to closure. So in reviewing this proposed agreement and discussing the issue with Chief O'Leary, I feel much more comfortable having discussed this with Chief O'Leary, seeing that this agreement addresses his concerns for public safety. I was particularly concerned about the ID situation where we have such high frequency of detecting that at other stores on Route 1. So I think that's going to be a very important part of this process. So in, again, in the spirit of supporting the continued viability of the other Patriot Place businesses, I do support this compromise agreement. I just wanted to make sure that my concerns were clear to everyone here. Thank you."
Any other comments from anybody? Lorraine, Linda, you have anything?
No.
All right. There's a motion on the table, there's a second. All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, could I ask the Board consider amending the motion, just semantically to say rather than conditioned upon the four conditions, it's conditioned upon the agreement between the parties.
Okay.
Which the parties will execute.
Jim, you made the motion.
I don't make the, yep, that's fine.
And Linda, you seconded it, are you okay?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
Can I have a quick clarification? In that motion, I do not see a December 2013. I open January 1st and January 13th.
The six, it's six months.
The next January is January 1st, 2013.
The motion will include.
In the agreement, it's listed as 2013.
Right. I think what she was saying is if it said January 1st, you could come back and say, no 14, no 15, no 16. So, but that, it is in the agreement as 2013. So all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Lou, Lou, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for having me, thank you.
And welcome to the town of Foxborough. You're very welcome.
There's going to be nobody left.
Chris.
Okay.
Thank you. So you take care.
You're the one who spoke, first of all.
Let my office know if you need it.
All right, can I have your speech?
What about this stuff?
Okay. For the, Pauline, thank you.
Okay. All right. The next, the next item of business, I'll ask folks if they would please try to be quiet as we have a meeting to continue. So if you're going to exit, please exit quietly. Steve, it might be easier if you just come to the microphone. If you sit down, they were not all going to be able to see you. So do you mind just standing here for a few minutes? If you're not comfortable, we can find a chair to put out there for you. Okay? So, as the Board knows, Dan Ayagada had resigned. The policy is to make it a joint appointment.
Hit the gallows.
Please, people, we're trying to continue the meeting. To fill this position on a temporary basis, it is a joint appointment by the school committee and the Board of Selectmen. Steve interviewed with the, with the school committee last night, and we received their report today, where they unanimously approved his endorsement to be, the appointment until the election. And so I'd like to ask Steve if he'd like to make an opening statement, and then I'll, I'll start with Linda, and we'll ask any questions you have of Steve, and then the Board will take its vote.
Thank you. So naturally, it's, it's, the timing is rather surreal for me and sad for our town with Dan's passing, and it's purely a timing issue. I almost wish it could be done a little further out for the family and for the town, and I mean that sincerely as a husband and a father. The other thing that I, that I think the Board of Selectmen should know if they don't already is, and many, many people here may know, is I'm currently a sitting member of the Foxborough Financial Advisory Committee. And so before I went for this position, I talked to our town moderator, Frank Spillane, to make sure that I was doing everything within protocol, and that if we were to move forward with this and the appointment were to happen, that it's all going to carry out properly for the town, particularly with town meeting coming up ahead and the work that we do on the Financial Advisory Committee. So if it does go forward, my appointment won't be until my work is concluded after town meeting, or when my term on the Advisory Committee officially ends, which I believe is in June-ish. He'll have to excuse me for not knowing the exact date, but I believe everything's straightened, straightened, ironed out, so I appreciate your time in letting me be here. You might want to know why I'm even stepping into this role. It, it, it just sort of happened one night. I'm a liaison from, from AdCom to the school committee and heard that the resignation had happened, and frankly, I didn't know Dan at all, not one bit. And I heard the opening was there and thought about it for a while, and as it turned out one night, I was walking out from school committee, and I asked the chairman of the school committee and the superintendent if anyone had asked to fill the seat, and they had said no. And so I said, well, jeez, you know, I might be a good fit, at least for the temporary appointment. So it all happened rather quickly. This all sort of came through in about three, four weeks. And I asked the school committee last night, and I respectfully asked the Board of Selectmen tonight, to if you want to put this off, and if another, another person comes forward who might be better qualified or a better fit for this, it would be a pleasure to have that process go on, because I want what's right for the students and the town, and if they need to vet someone else for this, that's fine, too. I love this town, we all know it. I'm not going to sing "God Bless America," but I love this town, and there's not many people in this town that make eye contact with me anymore, because I usually ask them for something, to paint a truck, or something for a float, or something like that, and, you know, so I'm pretty active in town for the students and the schools. And that's what I really love. I see that the students in this town is just a reservoir of potential. I have cousins that graduated from Southeastern. One of them is currently working, he's a grown man, he's currently working, I'm very proud of him on a, on a pretty sophisticated project down at the NASA in one of the Apollo chambers. I have another cousin who graduated from there, who actually has a patent. He's a professional welder. And as it turns out, my wife's second family is Gene Kosteki, who was on the Board there for years, and they actually named the gymnasium after him, and some of you know this. But there's actually a certain, if you will, romantic quality to me stepping into this role, because my family will be very proud. I talked to my wife and my children about it, it's going to be okay. They might even actually see their father more. A lot of people here in this room, at home, and national TV if we are on tonight, and the Board of Selectmen know that it's sometimes hard to see a family when you're a volunteer engaged in town. You love this town, you bleed it, but sometimes you have to not be home before bedtime. And I talked to my wife about that, and it actually may afford me some more time home than currently what I'm doing on AdCom, although I absolutely love my role on AdCom. If you folks have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I think you have copies of my Civic and my professional resume up there, and grill away.
Linda?
If you, if you care to.
If not, I'll just sit down, and this will be easy.
Linda?
Well, you, you come highly recommend, recommended for the job, too, so you should be very proud of some of the write-ups that we have here for you. And I don't have any questions, other than I'm sad that you didn't know Dan, because he's a great guy. And I think that you have a great personality that is a lot like our friend Dan, and I think that you would fit right into this slot very nicely. And I thank you for everything that you do for the town. Thanks, Steve.
Lorraine, you're next.
Steve, I don't have any questions for you, but again, knowing you from Advisory Committee and getting to know you over the years has been a pleasure. I see you put your heart into everything that you do, and, you know, in the same way I know Dan put his heart into this. And so, you know, I'm thrilled that you've applied to be in this position, and I know you'll do a fantastic job. So thank, thank you for volunteering.
Okay.
And I've known Steve for a number of years, his family, and in the soccer fields, and through the Advisory Committee, and I actually saw you on the School Committee last night, so that was an impressive discussion. Absolutely no reservations, he's got a passion. It's something that jumped out at me last night, listening to you, even though the students are from Foxborough, they're physically at a school in a different town.
Right.
And your discussion of how important that is to reach out and keep them as part of the community, something I don't always think about, but that was, that was very telling. So, no reservations at all.
Mark? I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead, Dan.
Make a motion that we have Steve Uden fulfill the, as the interim appointment as Foxborough Representative Southeast Regional, Southeastern Regional Vocational School Committee.
There's a motion by Mark, a second by Linda. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Kevin, would you draft a letter to the?
Thank you.
Chairman of the School Committee, and then ask him to notify Southeastern Regional Vocational School Committee of our decision? Thank you.
Can I just clarify that? It's no torpedo, just subject to me.
Filling my roles on, on AdCom, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
You're not going to stay?
Okay. We now have, yeah, we now have a joint meeting with the Planning Board to discuss the reappointment of John Rhodes as an associate member of the Planning Board to a one-year term expiring May 1st, 2013. I'm sorry that our facility does not offer the same kind of conveniences as Town Hall, but we need room.
Always first class.
Town Hall's never big enough these days. Kevin, you want to introduce yourself and who you've got up here?
Kevin Weinfeld, Chairman of the Planning Board, along with Bill Greeter, Ron, Shannon, and Gordon. This is John, has served for three years as our alternate member. He is just a great find for us. He's an engineer, he looks at things in ways that we don't always think of, and he's very talented. We've been very happy. He's voted unanimously by our Board to be retained, and we hope you'll see fit to keep him on as well.
Okay. Mark, questions?
Just a comment, Larry. I've had, I got to spend last summer with John, and it was nothing but a pleasure working on the memorial and down at the Public Safety Building. And I don't think we butted heads once, we just enjoyed our time together, and his expertise was exceptional, and he tried to catch me once or twice, being off on a calculation, and I think he failed, but I think he's an exceptional volunteer and exceptionally a gift to this town, like everybody else that volunteers in this town. I look forward to staying in that position as a substitute.
Alternate.
Alternate.
Okay, Jim?
I've seen you on the Board, and I'm very impressed, and if it's unanimous glowing recommendation, that's more than, than I need, so thank you.
Lorraine?
Glad that you're coming back on, John. I've seen you in action, it's great. I enjoy all of the interaction at the Planning Board meetings, so thank you.
Linda?
Just thanks for everything that you're doing, and continue on, and you have a great backup here that, you know, I'm not going to go against, that's for sure.
I first met John, I think, in the 1980s, and he's done, done well with everything he's done in every community he's been involved in, so we're very proud to have you with us. Do I have a motion?
I move that we reappoint John Rhodes as the associate member of the Planning Board to a one-year term expiring May 1st, 2013.
We have a motion by Linda and a second by Lorraine. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Excuse me, that vote is ten to zero. It is a joint plea.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
To the Board, thank you very much. I'm very proud of you, sir, and we're loving you.
Thank you.
It's a good, it's a good Board, and it's an enjoyable experience with your work with all of the Board members.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Okay. Planning Board is going to stay, I think, because we're going to talk about the annual town meeting warrant review articles 25 through 29.
Yeah, unfortunately Sharon, Sharon, rather, could not attend tonight. Her husband has a problem, physical problem, so she's in New Hampshire with him, but Bill and I are here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay.
Good evening. First message is a message from Sharon. She asked that we pass along the information that the Master Plan Survey that was going to shut down on the 22nd at midnight has been extended through April 26th, this Thursday, April 26th. We would encourage those in the community, both business and residents, that haven't had a chance to, to go to the website, that they go to foxborough, O-U-G-H, masterplan.com, and help the Planning Board shape the, the look of Foxborough for the next 20 to 30 years. So Sharon, thanks.
What kind of response have you had so far?
Better than expected, but not as good as hoped for.
Okay.
We've had a great response to the, to the open houses that we did for two straight days. We've actually done the old door knock on the businesses to try to get them involved so that they have some input to it, and the school department sent flyers home to the children, through the children, to the parents. And we just got a commitment today from the superintendent. She's going to help us get our consultant and the planner in front of, well, in our day it was called a civics class, but now I think they call it urban living or whatever. So that, because they are going to be the Foxborough of the next 20, 30 years, and they're going to have to live with whatever town meeting adopts, and we would like them to be part of the process. So anyhow, thank you for allowing us to do that.
There's my question.
Yep.
People have already contributed at the forums at the Town Hall where they wrote everything out. Should they still do the online survey, or is it adequate that they submitted their comments?
We are not sophisticated enough to say that we don't want to hear from every member of a household, so, you know, we would encourage all residents, because there's stuff in there for all ages. What do you, what do you see lacking, you know, downtown? What do you see lacking at one of the plazas? So that's why we want to reach out to the, to the school kids also, just to see what, you know, keep them involved.
Okay, thanks.
As far as the warrant articles, I'm not sure of the numbering, because I know there's been several changes and additions and renumbering. So if we could take, I'll start out with what I think is the first one. It used to be Article 28, but I'm not sure if that's the number that it starts with now. And it's the one about to strike the words, and it's in Section 3 dot 4. Is that still 28?
25.
That's 25 now? Okay. So I'm assuming that it's 25 on up after that. We'll see how good I can. We'll see how good I can remember that as we go along here. So Article 25, it's just a reaffirmation that there is no use variance allowed in our bylaws. The ZBA cannot do a use variance. And the language, there's still a tad bit of language in there that should have come out when we did the recertification. And as we have told this board and AdCom several times, this is a working document, and every time somebody reads it, there's another little tweak that needs to be done. And so, there was this section that should have been removed when we did the recertification that lived, so we need to take that out. So that's Article 28. Yeah, see that? Short retention span. So Article 26, if there are any questions on that before I move on?
Any questions from the board?
Article 26 is another whole section, the 1 dot 6 section of the bylaw, which that whole section should have been removed during the recertification. When the bylaw quotes the Massachusetts General Law, we, during the recertification, just cite the general law number rather than quote the entire law, so that if the state changes the verbiage, our bylaw is still current, because we're only referring to the Massachusetts General Law number, we're not quoting the text. So it'll keep our bylaws more current. And so that's Article 26.
Any questions on that from anybody? All right, keep going.
Article 27, Family Daycare, Small and Large. The ZBA presently, that goes through the ZBA, and what has been determined on that is that the state requirements are far more stringent than our local requirements. And especially with educational uses, there's all kinds of variances that educational use is granted. And so, from taking it to, from a ZBA process to a straight Planning Board process, and this was done at the request of the ZBA, by having this come directly to the Planning Board through our Site Plan Review, we're able to address things that legally we can address on any project that has an educational use, such as traffic, drop-off areas, pickup areas, parking lot design, that sort of thing. Educational uses are not exempt from that, and that puts it back into the Site Plan Review process.
Questions from the board?
Bill, on the S1, you're still saying it's not allowed, even though, isn't that the Family Daycare under the Dover Amendment, and the state would overrule that? I'm not sure why you pulled that out. All the zoning, it's a, you changed from Board of Appeals to yes, except for the S1 zone? In other words, if someone wanted to put a, one, a daycare facility in an S1, aren't they allowed to do that anyways?
The feeling is that in S1, we would, this is a family daycare, the type that's in a, in a home residential area, not a box-type daycare center.
Okay. And chances of having a family?
Right.
On S, in the, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, keep going.
All right, so the next one is the streets, and it's adding Howard Ave, Rock Hill, Shaw Place. And this is to do with the Design Review Overlay District. When the Design Review Overlay District was created years ago, for some reason, these streets were omitted. And this actually was discovered when we were doing inventory of the downtown for the Master Plan, and an intern was out walking around citing each building downtown, what its use was, where it was physically located, on what street or whatever, and it came out that these streets weren't there. So it was an omission. These streets are within that area, have enjoyed the, all the attributes that the Design Review Committee could give them. And the other thing was, it was found that Granite Street, which is in the Design Review area, there was not an end to it. It actually went all the way out into the state forest. And so, the thought was, and what we put in place, was to have it end at where Union Street and Granite Street intersect. It seemed to make sense that that would close the loop there.
Any questions? All right, keep going.
And then, I believe the last article, and that's to do with the floodplain. And the county has redone the floodplain maps and designations, and this was brought to our attention by a zoning enforcement officer. And, and the county actually came to him and said, "We've made these changes, your community needs to update and adopt this new plan." And by us adopting this, it allows businesses, businesses and residents that fall within the floodplain, regardless of whether it's the old designation or the new, to get flood insurance. And those that have it, it would allow them to renew it. Failure to do so puts them at risk.
Questions from any of the board? So is there a motion on the board to support Articles 25 through 29?
I'll make a motion to support Articles 25 through 29.
There's a motion by Jim, a second by Mark. Discussion by the board? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And one last thing, we wanted to just give you a heads-up. In preparing for this process, we looked at the warrant, and we haven't, hadn't looked at it in its entirety. And we noticed that Article 22, which is the stretch code that was brought forward by the Selectmen, as a Planning Board, we hadn't looked at the stretch code article. And we are going to be doing so Thursday night and making a recommendation on the floor whether we, as a Planning Board, support Article 22. We've had discussions as we go through the Master Plan, whether or not it's too early for this, and we want to do a formal review of it Thursday evening and then make it known Thursday night, I mean Town Meeting night. But we didn't want to do that without letting you know that that was in our plans.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're running ahead of schedule right now. The Planning Board was generous. Randy, you want to join us?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before you go to that discussion, I had given the board a letter with some very good news. Could I announce that to the board and then give Randy the pleasure of presenting the board with something?
Which letter is that?
I hope it got in your package. If it didn't, here it is.
I didn't, oh, that, oh, yeah, I did.
It was just something that came in today, so.
Yeah, right here.
I wanted to take advantage of him being here tonight.
Go ahead, read it.
Thank you.
You didn't get it?
If you present this to the board, because this is you and your staff's achievement. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll read from the press release. Town of Foxborough receives Excellence Award. In a project championed and led by Randy Scollins in 2008, the town purchased and implemented Tyler's Munis Financial System, the dominant and most sophisticated municipal financial package used throughout Massachusetts and the country. On Wednesday, April 11th, at the Tyler Connect 2012 User Conference in Grapevine, Texas, the Town of Foxborough's Finance Director, Randy Scollins, was presented with the Tyler's Public Sector Excellence Award. Only six out of 10,000 Tyler Worldwide clients received this award. It is presented to those who realize meaningful savings and efficiencies after implementing a Tyler product and for demonstrating excellence and best practices for developing, deploying, and maintaining Tyler solutions in new and successful ways. The award honors innovation and organizational efficiency, productivity, and responsiveness. Randy also received an all-expense-paid trip to the conference in Texas. I hope Grapevine, Texas, was better than it sounds, I don't know.
It's very good.
Where he presented the town's achievements. Randy presented a paper to the conference. Tyler's Public Sector Excellence Awards Program is our chance to publicly recognize clients who embrace our technology and expertise to meet their constituents' needs while creating value for taxpayers in the form of operating and financial improvements, said Richard Peterson Jr., President of Tyler. Feedback from our most pioneering clients further enhances the power of our product suites, and we're proud to offer them for them. So, Mr. Chairman, apart from the Tyler Company's marketing pipe in here, the important part of this is that Foxborough was one of six of the 10,000 customers, most of which are governments, large and small, all over the world, that use this product. And annually, they select based on a competitive application that's filed, the communities that have realized efficiencies and productivity. And it's a, it's a real distinct honor for Foxborough to have been selected. And this is something that Randy Champion and his staff has implemented, that was done this past year. It was done smoothly, without really any great fanfare, just really a testimony to how hard they worked, because it was a huge system conversion. And we got a beautiful trophy there for the trophy case, and I thought the board would be very proud of hearing about this accomplishment.
Congratulations.
Thank you for the recognition, but it really goes to the finance staff and the administrative staffs on both the school and the town side. It was a really group, group achievement, but thank you for the recognition.
Maybe Kevin should have shown us that trophy and made that speech before everybody left.
Say that again?
You should have said that before everybody left of Citizens in Port.
Always a critic in the crowd, Jim, huh? Go ahead, Randy.
Sure. The next item on your agenda has to do with your thoughts with regards to what is considered the excess levy capacity that's currently available within the FY13 budget, is the way it's been constructed. There's approximately $409,000 today that we can confidently say that will be excess levy capacity, meaning that we do not need to levy to the limit by that amount, and therefore the board has some policy options at its disposal as to how they would like to handle that. And this is, this is that discussion. The two primary options, and really the key options outside of incremental spending, but I think we're beyond that point in the process, the two key options are, one, either a direct rebate back to the taxpayers, you know, in FY13, and it would equate to approximately $57, $58 per average residential homeowner. Or another option, and it is the preferred option of the Advisory Committee, that's the way that they've actually voted the FY13 operating budget, which is to reduce the pending borrowing for the library project by that amount. The library project borrowing is going to happen as soon as we have a voted decision at Town Meeting. On this topic, we'll be borrowing either $7.5 million for the project, or some amount less than that, you know, could be $7,95,000 if this excess was applied to that. And the benefit of doing it that way is to have less debt outstanding, helps our debt ratios, as well as there's interest savings over the life of the bond as well. And given that this is a debt-excluded project, all of the savings still go back to the taxpayer, albeit over time, but it is, it's net present value positive. The savings would be in that option, instead of $405,000, it would be about $553,000, depending upon the interest rate that we get, assume 3.5%. So those are, in essence, the, you know, the options available to the board.
Mr. Chairman, just one further note, and I know there's a couple members of the AdCom here. The AdCom did vote to reduce debt service, taking advantage of the greater savings over a longer period of time. So we wanted the board to be aware of that.
Okay. Linda, I'll start with you. Questions? Comments?
No, this was perfect.
Lorraine?
No, no questions. I support the idea of reducing long-term borrowing.
Jim?
I do support, you know, if there's an extra $100,000 in the long run that you save from doing it. And I don't, it's not my intention to make this a big discussion, but when we have a $58 million budget and we spend a lot of time thinking about what do we do with $400,000, part of me wants to say if we tax too much, or if there's too much in it, give it back to the taxpayers and let them pay off their mortgage and let them make savings other way. So, you know, I'm not passionate about either way, because it is a big amount, but in the context of $58 million, I think I'd like to say to just give it back and let the people get a little bit of a break. I know we just voted to split the tax rate, and it was, in my mind at the time, was, you know, we were kind of in dire straits and, you know, it's a little bit of a shift. So it's a moving, it's a moving piece for me. But, you know, if we don't, if we, if we got too much from taxes, give it back, and the more you get in, you know, that's what I'm feeling right now.
Mark?
I would prefer to see it used to put in the special account for the, to kick off Town Hall, to somehow use those funds in the long run, the debt exclusion would be lesser on the Town Hall. To give it back, Jimmy, I totally think it's, it's something to think about, and it's a $58 million budget, but you're giving everybody back an average $58. I don't just see it making that much of a difference, but on something that could be potential $5 million project, if not more, it would definitely reduce that cost right off the bat by 10%. So I've said that since the get-go. I really want the board to stop pursuing the Town Hall project. I know it's not the right time, but it's going to financially, but the bonding rate right now is the best. Bonding rate is very high. And I think we get, just start to kick off now, use it for whatever we have to, you know, and have another meeting about that. And then we'll start the process. In two years from now, hopefully we'll be knocking or fixing the Town Hall.
I'm sorry, is there an option to use it towards Town Hall, or, I thought it was to pay off a bond that's existing?
He's proposing a third option that's not on here.
Right. There, that's a possibility with certain mechanics. Obviously, there's no warrant article at the annual to, you know, spend any, any dollars on Town Hall. However, the way that the mechanics have been constructed currently is that it could still generate, still levy to the limit, it'd still generate that incremental $409,000, and that would ultimately just flow into, you know, flow into free cash.
If it goes into free cash. And then what you'd have to do at a, at a subsequent Town Meeting, whether it was a specialist fall or the annual next year, you'd have to take it out of free cash and probably set up a, a.
Capital.
Capital Reserve account for Town Hall. You have to name them when you set them up. And then you could put the money into that account, but you'd have to do that later, because we don't have an article queued up to do that.
But by, Mark, to your point, by levying to the limit, which is the way the current operating budget is structured, it's less reliant on free cash by this, this amount. Therefore, there'll be more free cash than was anticipated to be used this budget cycle, if everything goes forward as presented. So therefore, you would, you would have had this, generated this additional $409,000 in free cash that's available, as Kevin said, for future appropriation.
Is it a difficult process what I'm asking for?
No, no. Everything's possible, or most everything's possible.
All right, so my comments are the following. Either Option 1 or Option 2 gives a rebate, in essence, to the taxpayer. One gives you, one smooths that rebate over 20 years of the life of the library. And while you'll save more in the long run with interest, if you bond at the higher amount, those that are using the library over the next 20 years are paying for that use. What I struggle with, I think maybe is what Jim was saying, I hear from lots of seniors and lots of young families who are, who are struggling. And $58 may not sound like a lot of money to some people, but anything we can do for seniors and for young families to reduce the taxes and to minimize the taxes is pretty important. So I would lean as well, I think as Jim said he would, to give the full dividend now and not, not tax to the levy. So is there a motion on the board?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
So, I just want to clarify, in the situation where we reduce the long-term debt, the annual reduction. reduction to each residential taxpayer on average is $80, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, it just strikes me that that's a higher savings than the $50 approach, so...
It's the interest, it's the interest savings over time.
That's over the life of the bond?
Yeah, and somebody would have to earn, you know, three and a half percent on their under $57.77.
But the first year is not $80.
Correct. It's over the 20 years.
Gotcha, okay.
Just a note on the chairman's point. And there's a, you know, some bargaining ramifications to that option.
Okay.
The, you know, the direct rebate in that fashion.
Yeah, the board, I think, is aware that there's going to be bargaining implications no matter which alternative you pick, because clearly when you go into collective bargaining and you've got a surplus and you didn't use it, you know, then when you sit down with the bargaining units to negotiate, set parameters for the new contracts, we're going to be reminded of that. Frankly, you know, in terms of whether you use it, Mark's suggestion, you use it to reduce long-term debt, you give back a lump sum one time. The fact that there's a surplus is, it doesn't matter how you use it, the fact that there's a surplus is the material fact. And so I wouldn't urge you to worry too much about that because one way or the other, we will hear it in collective bargaining. So I think the important question is more, how do you want to use it?
So is there a motion from the board?
Motion to support. Are we voting on the article?
Yeah, there's an article...
Because the article is written to support this, correct?
Which will let you do either one, lump sum one year, reduce borrowing over 20 years, we just have to amend the wording of the article. There isn't an article to do what Mark had suggested, but we can accomplish that later. So you have all your options, you can do whatever it is you'd like to do, and there's some details we'll have to work out. I do want the board to know that the AdCom has voted to reduce debt. So if you do something else, we're probably going to need to do some discussions with the AdCom and see if we can get everybody in the same shoe of music, because this will be somewhat confusing for town meeting. And I, my nature is always to try to resolve these disputes and go to town meeting with all the boards in agreement. So, you know, Randy and I are meeting with the AdCom this Wednesday night, so if you decide you want to do something different, we will report that and see if it has any influence on their vote.
So you're saying they voted option two on this document?
Yes, they voted to reduce debt.
Right, but specifically with the operating budget, Article Four, they voted the funding to levy to the limit. So they voted, you know, full taxation within Article Four, less reliance on free cash, as is their authority as the advisory committee to make that, to make that recommendation. It can be amended certainly, but that's in order to achieve the approach that you articulated, Larry. That's what would be required unless they change their vote on the motion as an amendment to that motion on Article Four in order to give the rebate at this point.
To say it differently, to see if I understand what you said, is what they're suggesting is you taxed the maximum, which is an extra $400,000, and then you use that $400,000 to reduce the debt?
Correct.
Okay. And the other option would be just not to raise it to the maximum and give that immediate relief to the taxpayers when the tax rates are set for the next year?
Correct, and the mechanics of that would be a motion to amend the way the funding has been constructed for Article Four, the operating budget, and then a vote of no on the reduction to the, reducing the library bar.
Jim, both options, just to be clear, because I know the board probably knows this, but I'm not sure folks understand it necessarily. Whichever option you take, whether you reduce debt or you give it back in a one-time lump sum, it saves the same amount of money for the taxpayer. Because when you reduce debt, because that's exempt debt, it's above the levy limit, it's an override. What it is, is we're going to levy that much less in taxes versus if you, we're going to levy that much less in override taxes. If you give it back in the form of a one-time lump sum, then it means we levy that much less this year in taxes. So either way, you're giving the voters, you're giving the taxpayers a break. The reason it's worth a little bit more over time is because of compounding interest, the present value. So it's worth $80 over time versus $58 as a one-time lump sum.
So...
Just a question, Randy, in the difference of what Mark was alluding to, the difference if it didn't go to free cash or we find a mechanism that it doesn't go to free cash and then we put it towards project exit, whether it's a town hall. Not to say it doesn't have merit, but we're putting it towards something that nobody's voted on yet.
Correct.
Versus putting it towards an existing bond that you make the savings later.
Which generates savings now, correct.
So I think I would have probably an easier time putting it towards an existing bond where it's already been voted and people, you know, they pay, they get the savings now or savings later than to put it in something that no one's voted on yet just because we have it.
And as you know, that's traditionally the approach we've taken with the whole capital allocation process, is to utilize the funds for needs now.
What would be the federal tax, an individual in town, what difference would this make in a federal tax return? Does it affect it at all?
Depends on, you know, depends on how they itemize. Obviously, it's real estate taxes, if somebody's an itemizer, you know, it could be deducted and depends on their bracket.
Okay.
All right, so is there a motion on the board?
Motion to approve scenario two, reducing long-term borrowing by $405,000.
Second?
There's a motion by Lorraine, a second by Mark. Discussion from the board? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chairman votes opposed. Motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item is the non-union pay plan. Kevin?
Mr. Chairman, we've given the board a fairly in-depth presentation, answered questions. You asked for the boards and committees that have employees covered by it to weigh in. There were some presentations made. I visited with some of the boards, others reviewed it themselves. They all sent letters in. They unanimously endorsed it. There were some conditions that had to do with one or two employees. I've met with the boards on those and assured them that we will work those issues out. Now, we can't work them out immediately, we can only work them out through the next budget process, but I certainly committed that we will do everything we can to work those issues out. So having done that, I don't really have anything to add, but happy to answer any board questions at this point.
Have you talked to the AdCom yet?
Yes, a couple times. AdCom is frankly waiting for you because this really, they feel this really is your lead vis-à-vis the charter that gives you the responsibility here, so they're kind of waiting for your lead on it. And Randy and I will be meeting with them tomorrow night. This is one of, I think, the last three articles, two or three they have left to take a position on.
Okay. Lynda, I'll start with you.
So everyone was spoken to. I was just wondering if at some point, did you reach out to the Wage Board themselves?
I'm sorry, the acoustic's are terrible, and I'm deaf as a tuna, so...
It'll be good to be home, won't it?
Did what?
The Wage and Salary Board that we have currently in Foxborough, did you go over these things with them at all at some point?
With the Wage Board?
Yes.
Yes. They had to take a consensus because their meeting hadn't, it was a technical glitch, we hadn't posted their meeting, so they couldn't take an official vote. But so they did it by consensus, and they unanimously endorsed it with the option that the employees who would have otherwise received a step this year under the old plan would get a step under the new plan. So that was their only caveat, but otherwise they unanimously endorsed it. And I don't know if anyone, oh, Gary's here from the Wage Board, so he may want to add to that.
Do you have anything to add to it, Gary, or...
No, I don't. I agree with you.
Okay, thanks. That's all. I was just wondering about that, that's all.
Lorraine, you're next.
I think, you know, based on the feedback, I support this plan. I think we should do it sooner than later because, you know, it's important to be able to retain the employees that we have. This really creates a scenario where we can do that. And I think if we delay it, Randy, am I right, it could potentially cost us more if we delay this because of step changes?
Potentially, potentially, there are steps in our current annual wage plan that would not have steps.
Right.
Are you going to talk back and forth? Can you come down, Andy?
Potentially, depending upon the implementation, you know, if the plan were not adopted now, it could potentially cost more, given that under the current personnel wage bylaw, employees, there are still some employees who are entitled to steps, and so therefore you would have that as a base. And then if you implement the plan afterwards, the plan that's been proposed, then it could be incremental. Otherwise, you'd have to maybe revisit the whole plan, which would be costing in and of itself.
And the step adjustment that's being proposed as an interim, you know, for those people who are going to be greatly affected by this change, is less than the actual step increase that they would have recognized, is that correct?
It depends on the scenario. I believe I sent a pretty detailed analysis to the board on that. I don't have that in front of me, but I believe there are, out of the 25 that have steps currently available to them in fiscal 13, I believe it's, I might have the numbers reversed, but I think it's 14 of those 25 actually do better without getting the step on the plan. And then there are 11, I think that's reversed, I think it's 11 actually do better by even not getting a step, so they're not, they're not affected badly at all. And then I think there are 14 that make slightly less than they would have if they had gotten a step and if they move on to the new plan. However, the average increase for that group is equivalent to the average increase of the entire non-union population. So in my personal opinion, I don't see that as a terribly negative impact to move to this plan.
Anything else, Lorraine?
No.
Jim?
I wanted to thank Mark Sullivan for reaching out to everybody six weeks ago and telling them to call the Selectmen. After a two-hour Sunday night discussion with somebody on this and then follow-up with a lot of different departments, I think I'm a little more in tune now than I was. It wasn't so much the dollars and cents, it was the process of this whole scenario where it was new to a lot of people. So I think the last couple of weeks, I think a lot of people reached out, there was consensus, there was some give and take, and I'm comfortable with this now.
Mark?
I feel rushed on it, I really do. I think, I just think it was the end of a long season here, and I think it was being pushed through a little fast, but I understand the reasoning for it. I understand the compensation part of it all, but I do think that it's, I would have liked to have given it more time. It's not that in the long run I wouldn't be for it. At this point in time, I just feel like I'm being rushed, and I actually wish we could postpone it until the special. But I understand if the board doesn't want to, it's fine.
One of the things that I think was uncovered, I don't mean that the way it might sound, as you presented the plan, Kevin, you shared with us that the old plan, which really is an old plan, had step increases of 6%. And that as people were automatically moving up the steps, I don't know that the average taxpayer realized that you would move up a step, get 6% and get a 3% COLA. And so when you have, when you have folks that are wondering why compensation's going up so high, you know, at the Board of Selectmen and others, we don't get involved in a level of detail. As you presented the plan, you identified for us that one of the flaws in the old plan, you know, we don't have 12% inflation, we've got almost no inflation. So to have step increases of 6% and then have them basically be automatic becomes very expensive. And what you did here is two things. One, you made the step increases 3%.
Two and a half.
Two and a half, okay. And then the other thing is they're merit-based. So it's not just, you know, I survived another year, I move up the thing. And so I think both of those, from a taxpayer standpoint, are significant improvements from what they had. Maybe not so much from employee standpoint, but ultimately, most of our employees are taxpayers as well, and they have to pay the tax bill, and we need to kind of balance all of that. And as I understand it, when you put the steps together, you actually did comparisons to similar communities so that regardless of where you are on that, we do know how we stand competitively with other communities. And I think what you said, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that while the upper end may be very competitive or attractive, your expectation is that you'd have to perform really well to get up to that level.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman...
And then if you're only an average performer, you're not going to be anywhere near that level.
Right. The, no employee, when they go on to the new system, will go to a place that's higher than step six. Most will be below that. That, this is a 10-step system, so in order to get to those very high pay ranges, an employee has to get there over one step per year, and they've got to do it through performance. So instead of an automatic 6% pay raise right now that we've got, it's a two and a half and it's based on performance. It's a far superior system, it's a much more state-of-the-art system. It offers for those employees that are high achieving the opportunity to make higher pay, but only through performance. For the average employee, and there's certainly nothing wrong with the average employee who doesn't ascribe to that higher level of performance, they will do fine within the system, but they probably won't qualify for merit, but they'll get their annual COLA, whatever the board sets.
So the other question I have then is, a key element of this is to have an effective appraisal system. Do you believe that the town has historically had an effective appraisal system? And if not, what are you going to do to ensure that the appraisals are fair, reasonable, and people are held accountable?
We don't have any appraisal system in existence right now. That's the reality. Now, some department heads do their own, and I certainly applaud them for making the effort, but we don't have a consistent appraisal system. And I'm told we haven't had one for quite many years now. So we are already working on the new appraisal system, and I would expect it will be done and in place by midsummer sometime, and we'll actually start doing appraisals on the basis of that system. It'll be goals and objective-based, and I don't know yet what it'll look like, but the consultant is actually working with us to write that, and that's already underway.
So let me just ask you this question. In many companies, you know, people can get rated, let's say, five different, you can be far exceeds, you can be exceeds, you can meets expectation, you can need improvement or you can be unsatisfactory, however you want to be. And they also look at it that you can't have 100% of your employees far exceeds. And so they have a distribution that is suggested, not mandatory, but suggested, so that you can hold supervisors accountable to make sure that everybody's not giving very generous evaluations. Is that what you intend to do in the system you're putting together? How will you ensure that everybody doesn't get a far exceeds and automatically continues to move as the old system did?
The system will feature a raider and a reviewer. So department heads will rate, evaluate the employees that work for them. Their evaluations will come to the HR director, who will be the reviewer, and then they will finally be passed along to me to take a look at and approve or disapprove. So there'll be two sets of eyes looking at every single one of them, three actually, the department head, the HR director, and myself. For the department heads, those reviews will be written by myself and viewed by the HR director for consistency and compliance. The key to any merit system is to be sure that every employee is being treated fairly according to a consistent standard, and that's really the HR director's job to make sure that. My job is basically to look at the overall result and make sure we don't have a situation where one year 90% of the employees don't get merit or 90% of the employees do get merit because clearly either extreme means the system is broken in some way. There also has to be some fairly significant training done with the department heads on how to do this system, how to implement it. It isn't something where you just hand them a form and say, okay, go rate your employees. We've actually got to do some training... We've actually got to do some training with them, and that is all part of the effort that we're doing to design and implement the system. It'll be a vast, vast improvement, because right now, we don't have anything. So to give you a picture of what will happen this year if the pay plan is not adopted, about a quarter of the non-union employees will receive a 6% step increase, because they're automatically due for that, and then a 1-1 COLA split on top of that. So their effective raise for this fiscal year will be 8%. And that's just, that's just not a justifiable, in my view, sustainable system. If the pay plan is adopted, then those same employees will receive whatever increase they have by moving on to the step, and that is a floating number. That's just coincidence of where they go on to the plan. They've agreed to forego the 1-1 COLA, and those, and as a second decision, the board would then decide if you want to allow people who are going to get a 6% step under the old system to get 1, 2 and 1/2 this year or not. That's a separate decision. Next year, every employee would be subject to the merit and would be eligible for whatever the COLA is, plus the merit 2 and 1/2 bump based on performance. And the goals and objectives will be put in place over the course of the summer for everybody.
So what number do you have in the budget?
Right now, we have a number in the budget sufficient to pay the 1-1 COLA and the 8%, or the 6% steps. Now, we've also carried in the budget, as a contingency, the additional funds necessary to implement the pay plan, which I think is a $24,000 delta, 24,000 more to implement the pay plan. And we're also carrying a margin if the board decides that you want to grant that one-time step. And I think Randy's got the exact number in front of him.
Just to, to point of clarification, the operating budget contains the steps for the 25 individuals.
Assuming the plan wasn't approved, you've...
Correct. But it's, but there's no change that's required, that's required for the operating budget if the board approves, supports the wage plan, and it gets adopted at town meeting, is the funding that would be brought to bear at town meeting to fund the new wage plan would just be added to the amount that's associated with the steps, so that we come up to the total of what is required for the wage plan.
So let me just ask you to put it in a simple term. If the board did not approve it tonight, the cost is X for next year. If the board does approve the new plan, the cost is Y. Is Y larger than X or smaller than X?
Y is approving the wage plan?
Y is approving the new plan. So is the new plan going to cost, in the next fiscal year, more or less than the old plan?
It's going to cost incrementally, I believe it's just under $30,000.
So help me understand, if the old plan had 6% steps, and the new one has 2 and 1/2%, why the new one is not less expensive than the old one?
The simple explanation is this, there were two or three positions, and I don't have that chart with me, but I'd want to look at it. There were two or three positions which alone had been severely underpaid. Now, the, and the cost of moving those people to the minimum of the new grade that they're supposed to be on, based on the market, is a very big number, it's 10, 15,000 of that delta. Other than that, the cost for either one would have been probably within about $10,000 or $15,000. And the reason is that it's about the same, is you're moving people onto a new plan that they're closest to, but not less than. So by definition, some people fall, and I think we had three people that actually fell dead on the same number. Then you have other people who their current wage is just below that new step, but they can't be less than, they have, I'm sorry, they can't be less than where they settled. They've got to be less than or equal to. So they might get a $2,000 bump just by virtue of going on to the one that they're closest to, but not less than. It's completely arbitrary and coincidental where they fall on the new chart. But when you add it all up, the cost is slightly higher.
But if they fall within 6% on the new chart, it'd be equal to where they were on the old chart, because they would have got a step of 6%?
Right.
So it would sound like there's quite a few people that are going to be 6% or more away from where they're going to have to go?
No.
Or is it just the two or three people that are skewing everything?
I don't have that chart in front of me.
The, there's no 6% step increase for those 25. They're just, they're just moving to the closest, but next highest, point on the pay plan from where they are.
They would not have, on the old plan, had an increase, a step increase in the old plan?
The 25 would have, but the entire, the entire cost of the plan is spread across, you know, 72 positions. So across all 72 positions, the incremental cost is, you know, is $30,000. So there's, there's some, you know, there is some, you know, there is some wage shifting. It's, you know, it's a, you know, some of the, some of the positions, not just the two or three that Kevin called out, but, you know, several of the positions, you know, have been slightly shifted.
I guess that the part that I'm just having trouble thinking about explaining to a taxpayer, this new system has 2 and 1/2% steps, not 6. It's got all these great features that are going to reward people for performance, but not overly pay people with these, as you said, 8% or 9% increases. So as you explain the program, I think the average taxpayer says, "Wow, this is going to save me money," as a taxpayer, because it's a more efficient plan. And then you say, "Oh, but, in year one, it's going to be $20,000, $30,000 more." And that's hard to explain, how this better plan that is going to save money is going to cost more money. So that's what I'm just trying to...
Because...
But if it's one or two people, that could explain, I don't know.
100% of the employees covered, 100% are going on the new plan.
Correct.
So in order to put them on the new plan, they either end up getting some, a kind of an increase, which can be as much as a couple of thousand dollars, or they get a very small increase. And I think there was three that were exactly equal, and then there was a few with the hundreds. And so the incremental effect of taking 100% of the workforce and putting them on is a bigger number than 1/4 of the workforce, who are the only ones who will get that 6% bump. That's why the cost is a little more. But as you go forward, the cost of this plan will absolutely be less than the current plan. Because next year, you've got that same quarter of the workforce who will get another 6% bump. And they'll keep getting a 6% bump until they hit, until they max out.
So could you do a quick analysis for town meeting that says, under the old plan, if we do nothing, here's the cost over three to five years, and under the new plan, here's what it is? So you'll, so you'll, so we don't get confused with the one-year transition, but if you look at it over five years?
Yeah.
What's the real savings going to be?
We can do that, as long as the board understands we'll have to make one major assumption, which is, how many people will qualify for merit under the new plan? Because that's, you know...
Right, subjective.
What I can tell you right now is, because we have no system, everybody who's scheduled to get a 6% step gets it automatically.
Right.
Under the new plan, you only get it if you qualify.
Correct.
And so I can tell you, based on implementing similar plans roughly, somewhere between 1/4 and 1/3 of the employees tend to get merit, and somewhere between 50 and 75 do not. And that's about the best I can do to bracket it, because, you know, I've had years when 75, 80% of the employees got merit, and then I've had years when only 25 or 30% get merit. And it's, you know, the importance of the system is that we make no presumptions about who's going to get it. We make it truly fair every single year with no, you know, predetermined consideration. But it ends up being typically about 1/4 to 1/3, something like that. So we can do that assumption, and we can show going forward, here's what the current plan would cost for the next three years, here's what the new plan would cost for the next three years, with that assumption, yes.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, it sounds odd. It's a better plan, it's more efficient, you don't have 6% steps, you've got 2 and 1/2% steps. They're not automatic, you have to earn them. And then, on the other hand, it's more expensive right away. And what you're really saying is that's transition, but if you look at it over three years, I just think it'd be confusing for the person sitting there in town meeting to hear, on one hand, it's cheaper, better, more efficient, but it's going to cost more money. And someone's sitting there and say, "Well, if I want my taxes to go up, use the old plan, because it's $30,000 less money." But you're saying, over a period of time, it really will be a savings. And I think that's what, if you want town meeting to approve it, you've got to demonstrate to them that it's not just a give-in, that, you know, there's, there's real thought that goes into it, and it, for the taxpayer, the taxpayer should want to adopt a program like this.
Well, the big, the going-in assumption isn't to build a less compensation for the employees. The going-in assumption is to build fairer compensation, so the employee who is the real high achiever gets rewarded...
Right.
...based on merit. And the employee who decides to do good performance, but not exceptional, gets their COLA, but they don't get that exceptional bonus. So it's not so much a matter of producing a cheaper plan as it is of producing a much fairer plan. We also have the phenomenon, I think I mentioned this to the board, where we've had real problems with the current pay plan trying to attract employees. And we've, I don't think with a single exception in the past year, hired anyone at step one, have we?
I don't recall that.
I've come to you on three separate occasions and asked your permission to actually use the new plan in order to recruit the people that we were trying to recruit, DPW director, HR director, water sewer superintendent. And because we were able to use that new pay plan, we've attracted excellent candidates. So another problem that this new plan will correct is the fact that our current plan is just really out of date. It's way below the market. The top of the range on our current plan is less than the average for the market. So when we use the current plan to try to attract a new employee, what we're finding is that we're not getting competitive candidates, because the top of our range is less than average. So in order to get people, I've got to bring them in and pay them right away, bang, right at step five or six. I mean, the plan is clearly out of date.
Right. And just to correct the record, you think, I don't recall you coming to us for approval on the water sewer person.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think the water board...
Correct. You came to us for DPW, you came to us for HR. And I just think that if, you know, if you're sitting here in town meeting, and there's 600 people sitting in the audience, and you ask them, how many of them realize that people got these step increases of 6% plus a COLA? I think you'd have very few people in the audience understanding that. And frankly, as stewards of the taxpayers' money, I think they'd be concerned, which is why you, the new town manager, took a fresh approach on the whole pay plan and brought someone in to try to revitalize it.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Is there a motion tonight?
Motion to approve the non-union pay plan as presented.
There's a motion by Lorraine. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Linda. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries full one.
I'll report that to AdCom tomorrow night. By the way, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I apologize. We had a glitch on the agenda. There was one article left off, and that's the one on the, on the veterans. Now, you can't take it up, because it's not on the agenda. So the, in the rush to get the agenda done, there was, as you know, Larry, there was a lot of changing on it. The planning board article was supposed to say article blank and 25 through 9, and the one got dropped. So what we'll have to do is do that the night of town meeting, and that's, I mean, that's not a problem.
Which one is this now?
It's the one to pay town employees who are deployed to the war zone, the difference between their town salary, the base pay...
I thought we voted that, didn't we, everybody?
Now, this, this shows exactly why the old saying is there. Do you want to talk to me, do you want to talk to the person who really knows what's going on, Sandra and Chris? Because they probably already knew it, and that's why they took it off. So delete the lead.
I think we did.
Fantastic.
I think we voted.
So all we need to do is tell the AdCom tomorrow night.
Okay. But if by chance we didn't vote on it, we'd do it on the floor?
If you didn't, we'll do it that night, but I suspect you're probably right. You probably do.
They probably checked the minutes, and saw we voted on it.
Okay.
I just noticed, Mr. Chairman, that Bob, Chairman of the Veterans Council, is here. Bob, do you know, off the top of your head, did the board vote already?
Yeah, it did.
It did. Thanks. I stand corrected.
Could have said that earlier. All right, thank you.
So is that, is that not the, Kevin, is that all the warrant articles that have been in front of us were done?
I believe, I believe you are now done. I will double-check in the morning to be sure, obviously, but I believe the board has taken positions on everything in the warrant.
Yep. Mark has asked for a five-minute break, so I'm going to grant a five-minute break. We'll be back in five minutes, folks. We're back into session, and I guess before I forget it, I want to thank the cable folks. It is not easy coming and setting up in a remote location like this. It's so much easier in town meeting, at town hall, but knowing that we were going to have too many people at town hall, we wanted to think ahead and have the meeting here. As Linda said, I think at the beginning of the meeting, it's, it's tough when you, when you have to keep moving your meetings, but as we get more and more participation on some of these issues, it's important to make sure, as we said a few weeks ago, that we have a room that will accommodate everybody, because we've made the decision that the minute you get to the 59 in the other room, you have to shut the meeting down. So I appreciate all the extra work that cable did to get ready for tonight and to broadcast it. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the, I'm going to turn this over to Jim and Linda. They worked with Kevin on the fiscal year 13 Town Manager Goals, Objectives, and Evaluation Form. And I think we're running just a couple of minutes ahead of schedule, so Jim and Linda, let me turn it over to you.
Sure. Do you want to take it, Linda, or do you want me to?
Go right ahead.
If you remember, at the last review that we had for Kevin, Town Manager Kevin Pecos, on his contract, there were certain requirements that we had to do a yearly review, and then his compensation was based on the performance review. So we went through the first year and did a review, and we did it on, there was a list that we came up with of goals and objectives, and it was probably about 70 goals and objectives, anywhere from solar panels on the roof...
Landfill.
The landfill, to saving revenue, to what have you. So we went through those, and when we did our evaluation, we evaluated them on items like supervision, leadership, execution of policy, community relations, economic development, alignment with the Board of Selectmen, financial management, execution of tasks. So there was a little bit of a going back and forth of what's the importance of something like supervision versus something that you can quantify that's in as goals and objectives. So there was a little bit of a conflict on the two different forms. So what Linda and I did is we sat with Kevin, and we took the goals and objectives, the 70 or so goals and objectives, and broke them down into the categories that we reviewed them on under. So for instance, under supervision, we'd have identify facilitator and recruit, work with facilitator to complete curriculum, include exercise, funding for fiscal year 13 budget. So those goals and objectives fell under the criteria that we evaluated them on. And then we put a point system, one through five, one being unacceptable, five being outstanding. So now we have a tool where we can give a rating system to all the goals and objectives and the categories. So I think at the end of that exercise, it met Kevin's objectives, so he has a way that he knows how he's going to be evaluated on for the following year. And we have a tool where we can take it all together and put, and weight it under the categories that we find it of different weights and importances. So at the end of that, we emailed it around to the board. We've had it, it's been kicking around for a few weeks and months now, and I think, I certainly signed off on it from the meeting, and I think Linda did...
Yep.
And Kevin did.
I just have one, one comment on it. When Jim's done, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So basically, I think we're at the point now, and we can tweak it with what Kevin's comments are, but this is a tool moving forward that, similar to what we did before, we each do our own evaluation, we bring it to the chairman, he puts it all together, and then...
Sure.
And then, um, or, yeah, him, he or she, uh, and puts it all together, and then you get a rating, uh, at the end, and then we'll hold that up to, uh, discussing, uh, your contract.
And, and the reason why I wanted to try to finally get this done tonight is, is last year, um, we were late in doing this. And so, we did it after the election, and, and Mark was fairly new and didn't have a whole year's worth of experience. And, um, there are four people running for two seats, and there could be two brand-new people here. And then, two out of the five don't have the year's worth of experience. So, I thought it was important to try to get this thing finalized so that each of the board members could, could do their piece, um, before the election, and then the, um, whoever becomes chairman, uh, could then pull the composite together. And then Kevin gets the feedback from the five people that work with him. And I recognize that there's only two weeks or so left to do it, but I thought, that's why I've been pushing to get this done, so we could get those done and give him the feedback, um, that, that he deserves and, and wants. So, go ahead, Kevin, you wanted a comment?
Yeah. Uh, first, I just want to thank Jim and Linda for working with me on this, because I think this is a, a greatly improved product, and I'm very happy with it. The only change that I made on here, um, and would suggest to the board, uh, from my viewpoint, is very necessary, on, I don't know which form you've got, whether it's the one I sent or the one that went around earlier, but, on this page, there was a block which attempted to translate, um, five grades for each goal, one being unacceptable, five being outstanding. And then it accepted to take, it attempted to take the grading from each section and correlate it to a certain number of points that each section was worth. So, for instance, supervision was worth 10%, leadership was worth 35, or whatever it was. I don't know what it was. Well, once we redid these forms, I thought that the way the points were awarded by section were totally arbitrary and just had no meaning anymore, uh, because that was from an old evaluation form that we'd agreed last year we weren't going to use. So, what I did is I took that reconciliation, that point weighting, and took it out. So, that what you've got left is, the board would take each goal and give it a one through five rating, one being unacceptable, five being outstanding, or wherever it is you put it. And then, um, you're simply out of the points. And that would be, and if you wanted to translate that into a percent of 100 or whatever, I don't care, that's up to you. But, um, that makes some sense to me, because now that you're looking at each goal individually and giving it a one through five rating.
So, Kevin, so, as an example, if supervision, which is weighted at 10%, um, gets a four, you're saying put a four there?
No, no, no. The way I've set it up now, what you've got in front of you is you've got five categories.
Right.
Now, these are, these were on the form that Jim and Linda did.
Right.
All I've done is I've removed the weighting for each, in the, for each of the seven sections.
Right. So, and I'm asking you is, if, if someone rated you for supervision, exceptional.
Mm-hmm.
Do they put a four in the total?
Yeah, they'd put a four in there.
So, that weighting is worth 10%. So, then they go to...
No, that's what I'm saying.
So, that you're saying the...
The 10%, the 20%, it doesn't make any sense, because, you know, I, supervision's 10%, leadership is 10%.
So, you're putting equal weight against all categories?
Execution, execution of policy is 5%. Now, that, that shows how arbitrary those are, because, you know, execution of policy, I, I would submit to the board should be worth a lot more than 5% in, in terms of what you want me to be doing. So, those percentages, which were on the old form, don't have any meaning on this new one. And actually, now that I'm looking at it, I wished I'd taken those off, and I just didn't catch that, because I took them off the top of the form and didn't take them off each section. But I can do that.
So, you're saying all eight would be equally weighted?
So, every single one of these goals would have the exact same weighting compared to the others. What would matter would be the total score, you know, how many threes, how many fours, how many fives, whatever you rate it. It would just be the total score.
So, the total score would be 32, a possible 32.
The best possible score would be 32 times five, right?
Or eight times five.
Eight times five, yeah.
Thirty-eight times five?
There's eight, eight categories, right?
Execution of tasks is number eight.
No. Each goal is its own thing. So, I think there's 32 goals, but the numbering got chopped off in my form here, so... Let's say there were 40 goals. It would be 40 times five points. Five is the maximum that could be attained, so it'd be 40 times five. That would be the best possible score. But your score would be whatever you rated it, so...
So, out of the 10, ways of evaluating supervision, leadership, you're saying to me, the best score you can achieve is a 40, 10 times five?
Whatever the total number of goals is, times five would be the best score possible.
Yeah. So, there's 10 times five.
So, well, no, I, so if you look at, so you've got about, you said 40 in here?
Um, I can add them up for you real quick.
See, I think he's counting. That's one, two, three, four, five.
Whether it's the way I printed it or what you're in, but it cut off the number.
No, that's why I'm trying to get clarification, too. I think, so if you look at supervision, Kevin, is, is that two underneath there?
Seventeen, eighteen, I'm going to be, nineteen, twenty-three.
Yeah.
Because the sub ones have pending things, so...
There's 38 goals.
That could take away from...
So, 38 times five would be the maximum possible score.
So, I think we're going a little backwards, because I don't have, you know, each year you're going to have maybe a 40 goals, and next year you're going to have 50 or what have you. I think the exercise that we tried to do was rate you on eight, only on eight things. So, for under supervision, that's one of the eight. Under supervision, you have availability through scheduled meetings and office hours. That's one item. The second item was conduct team building exercise with department heads. So, you may have five more. I don't think we're going through and rating every single thing you have under supervision, but at the end of the day, we want to rate you, are you a good supervisor? And these are all the things you did or didn't do. So, there's eight items only.
That's not what I'm hearing him say, though.
I know that this... Yeah. See, from my point of view, I've got 38 goals here. Now, some of these sections, of the seven sections, might have one goal, and others might have 13 goals. So, if you say that that one goal, under supervision, let's say for instance, is worth 5% of this overall rating, then mathematically, one goal's worth 5%, 13 are worth 5%. That doesn't make any sense to me, because the amount of work that I've got to do during the year to do 13 goals is a lot more than one. So, the arbitrary, um, point factors assigned to each of the seven areas, they're just, they're just arbitrary. They don't make any sense.
Well, I... What did you guys agree to? Sorry, go ahead, Lorraine.
Well, I was just going to suggest that, you know, I, I have, uh, experience with evaluations that don't use numbers. You use these descriptions, these five categories, and you rank the person that way. You know, you can have just three of these categories, really, and accomplish the same thing. Um, you know, a person who meets selectmen's expectation is doing a good job. That doesn't mean they're doing an average job. It means they're doing a good job. Um, if they need improvement, that's the other category. It, it's like unacceptable or conditional. Um, and if they exceed the selectmen's expectations, then they are, you know, one of those other categories. So, really, it's a three, three-way breakdown, um, potentially. But, so, if you ranked, if you went through these, all these individual, you know, these individual goals and all the subcategories, and then you provide your ranking of satisfactory, it means the town manager is doing a good job in terms of supervision. Leadership, you know, exceptional. Because, uh, you go through, and all these things really feed into your decision as to how, uh, the individual is performing. So, you know, rather than get into calculations, I think if, you know, whether it's three ratings or five ratings, it doesn't matter. It's just, uh, I think the narrative piece is important, because it's important to make it clear to the employee what the expectations are, what, you know, if there are any, um, marks of less than satisfactory, then I would think certainly there has to be some type of action plan to explain what is the expectation and what steps can be taken to bring it up to meeting the expectations. So, I mean, I, I like this layout. I like how all of the goals and objectives were categorized by each of these major headings. That, that really makes it much easier, I think, in the long run, to do the evaluation process. So, I think that's great. I, I just don't want to get hung up on the numbers, because I think it's, it really is any one of these five categories related to each of these major headings, um, and you come to that decision as a board member, based on how you, um, evaluate the performance related to each of these subsets here.
Let me, let me try to explain this differently, why I don't like the percentage, um, for each section. The way it says right now, 10% of the overall score, irrespective of how many goals were under supervision, 10% of the overall score would be how you scored me, um, in the area of supervision. In the area of economic development, I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven goals. But those seven goals, which are hugely important to the town, only constitute 5% of the overall score. And so, what I'm saying to the board is, look, I complete one goal under supervision, you all give me a good grade, and I get 10% of the, of my evaluation. Great job. And then I have these seven tasks under economic development, and if I did all of them really well, I would get only 5% for that. And if I did them very poorly, I would only lose 5%. But I think arguably, economic development is, every bit as important as supervision. And I don't think anybody could make an intelligent argument that economic development is only half as important as supervision. So, again, the, the percents in the individual sections is a holdover from that form we used last year, and we said, we're not using that anymore. And it just got carried forward. And what I'm saying to the board is, I don't think it has any meaning.
See, I, I think that's, um, go ahead.
I was just saying, but what I'm hearing is two different things, Kevin. What I heard, what I thought I heard Jim say is, we're going to give you, whether it's one, two, three, or one, two, three, four, five, we're going to rate supervision one of those, not conduct team building, and then a separate rating for availability through scheduled meetings and office hours. And that on leadership, it's going to be one rating instead of one, two, three, four, five. And you're saying, no, it's going to be all those individuals. So, what did you guys think you agreed upon?
Well, much, I'm not sure what it is you're saying. What I'm saying is, I don't think you should take each of the seven sections and assign these arbitrary totals.
So, forget that for a second. Throw that out.
Yep.
Okay, assume that's gone.
Yep.
What Jim, I thought I heard him say is that, under supervision, you have two goals.
Yep.
You want two separate ratings underneath each of those.
Right.
And Jim was saying there'd be one overall rating for supervision. Under leadership, you have one, two, three, four, five goals. You want five individual ratings underneath that. Jim was suggesting there'd be one rating under leadership. So, that's the discussion we're trying to figure out. Is it one for each category, or a rating for each sub-goal underneath each category? And there's a difference in opinion.
See, I, I think where this, how we got here was, when we did your review, we rated you on leadership. And then in return, you said, well, how do you quantify or qualify leadership? What is leadership? You wanted to be rated only on your goals.
Right.
And then that was discussion, well, if you save the town 100,000, but it's a complete disaster, because, you know, how you got there, the end doesn't justify the means, you know? So, we're at an impasse. So, when we sat down, you, I, and Linda, it was my expectation that those categories were important to this board of, for instance, supervision, leadership. Your goals and objectives, we didn't want that to get lost in the rating, so we took all of those, and, and whatever the goal was, we said, what, what category can it fit under, so it's not lost? And that, those are the ones that are going to be fluid. Each year, they're going to go up and down and change, but the main items, supervision, leadership, community relations, stay solid. And, and maybe you don't have a goal under community relationship for one year. You know, maybe it's just one goal. But I think if we went and tried to, to rate, you know, and, and I looked at these, there, there are 70 or 80 of them. I, I have no intention of going down and giving a score on each one of those. It just, it just seems, uh, very micro, whatever.
I don't think he was looking at the A through E on create merit J O bonus plan. I think he was looking at that as one versus five, and that's how he got 38, by adding up that number as both of those. But 38 is great, is a lot, too.
But I, I think if, uh, uh, the working relationship and meeting every, you know, other week, in, in getting your monthly reports, and hearing, you know, everything that's going on with your department heads and, and the pluses and minuses, we're in a good position to understand how you're doing on leadership, without going and evaluating all these...
I see what you're saying now. Okay. So, you would take each section, supervision, leadership, community development, and you would give that one a one through five, based on the, your view of how I did the steps, the goals under that section?
Under that step, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. That's okay.
Is that what your understanding was?
But then, you're asking, so we agreed to that, but then you're asking to take out the rating and make all eight equal?
Yeah. Only because the relative weighting makes no sense anymore with this kind of a form. That was a carryover from the old form that just arbitrarily...
And I think I'm okay, I mean, whether it's 10% or 5% or 15, they're all within there, and it's so subjective. Um, I, I don't want to get hung up on the numbers.
Yeah. Well, 35% of it is one category at the back end, and I, I can't figure out why that one category is worth one-third of a whole score.
Because you wanted it 100%, and you didn't want any of the others, so therefore, we had to find...
Exactly.
And that's how we worked our way...
And now, in the context of this new form, that doesn't make any sense anymore, what we did last year.
So, the other question that I have is, this document was produced on a certain date. It doesn't say on here, but it was produced at some point. And you completed a self-evaluation, in essence, by saying, I completed one A, I completed one B, I didn't finish D, E, F, G, or H. So, since the board has to do the evaluation in the next two weeks, is this fairly current with where you think you are in your goals and objectives? Or do you need to fairly quickly give us your own self, identif, self-evaluation in these, in this third clock's over?
Mary?
Yes, Lorraine?
I, I'm, uh, just concerned about the decision to be trying to do this within a two-week timeframe. The last time we did this, this took us like over a month and a half to accomplish, because of scheduling, uh, just because of the time it takes to do this. I, I would personally feel more comfortable with us really working to make sure we have this tool in place, and then, you know, granted, we've run out of time before this election. We evaluated, uh, Kevin last Octo, was it October we did it?
I don't remember the exact time.
You know, I think having this new tool in place with a new board, I think, really, if we end up in the same place, that when you, whoever ends up being on the board in October will be able to have worked with Kevin long enough to do this evaluation, as Mark did it for the first time last year.
So, what about his July 1st raise that he's expecting to get based on performance?
Well, you know...
Right? I presume you're...
Yeah, let me, let me just preface this by saying... First of all, can we just stay on subject and get back to the form, instead of jumping to when we're going to evaluate, and then jumping to what Kevin needs for July 1st?
Yeah.
I mean, this is what I want to concentrate on here. This is actually all that's on the agenda.
So, the form, I think what Kevin agreed to just a minute ago was to take off the ratings, make everything equal, and one rating per category. And what I was asking him is, in this column here, he's giving you an update as to how he, where he thinks he did...
Right.
...in that area. And I was asking him, before Lorraine's question, if that, if he thought that was current information, or he thought he needed to provide different information. Because if you were to look at that, again, if you looked at this number one and said, there's three complete and five pending, um, you, you might weigh that differently than someone else looking at it. So, I, I did, you know, I don't even know that you necessarily need it, because if we've had meetings every two weeks, we've had his status report, et cetera, we ought to be able to evaluate the supervision as leadership. But I was just trying to give him the opportunity to tell us whether he thought that was from[1729.26] to tell us whether he thought that was from 4 months ago or 4 weeks ago, and I'm trying to be fair to him.
Yeah. The, you guessed it correctly. The comments in the comments section are from back in, I think, November, when I last did this report. And then when Jim recreated it into this format, he took my report, as I had given it to him, and then recreated. So those are at least 4 or 5 months old in terms of updating. I haven't done any updating since. So I would have, yeah, I'd need to go down this. Now, going down this and giving you complete, pending, and some comment, probably a few-hour exercise. I could get that done in the next few days, I think. And you really need that. I mean, you know, no criticism of the board, but how do you know where I am on solar panels, on the landfill unless I tell you, here's where we are? Now...
If I may interrupt for a second, Kevin. If we all have the same evaluation form, you can do yours and pass it to the board...
Yeah, I can update this and send it to all of you.
And then you send it to all of us.
Yeah.
So, and once again, we can just give... I understand where it was going. Does everybody agree that this is the form that we should be using?
Yep.
I think everybody seems okay.
So don't we need a vote of the board to...
Here's the one that I don't... Yeah, 2 things you need to do. First, you need to vote on the goals and objectives, because the board has never approved the goals and objectives. So you guys need to report, you know, say, "This is the list." Now, here's the one. When we did this last year, last October, whatever it was, what we agreed was that we would do a new list of goals, and those would be the goals through the end of this fiscal year, through June 30. Now, that was the expectation with which I engaged to attempt to complete these goals. If we do it now, we're 2 months early. And so that's a bit of a disconnect, because I was supposed to have 2 more months to get these done. So obviously, if you evaluate me now, I'm gonna be well short of the mark, because it's, you know, 2 out of the 7 months... I'm sorry, 6, 7... I was supposed to have 8 months to get these done. And now I'll have 2 months of that gone, 25% of the time. So I don't know how to... At the same time, I'm sensitive to the fact that I don't wanna be evaluated potentially by people with whom I haven't worked and don't know anything about how I've done these things, for better or for worse. So I don't have an easy solution for that. I'm just telling you, I think that's a bit of a dilemma that we'll have to figure out.
So why don't we take it one step at a time? Anybody wanna make a motion to approve the form as amended, which is this form minus the rating columns? Motion by Linda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lorraine. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. So now we have the form. Second piece then deals with, A, Kevin and us talking about how does he do his piece? And second of all, when does the board do his evaluation? I don't have his contract in front of me.
Contract says you have to do it no earlier than the month of March and no later than May 1. The intent being, in the original contract, is that we would set goals in June or July of the year, right after town meeting.
Right.
And then I'd have a year to do them. And then, in the event of any changes in the board makeup due to the May election, the evaluation would be done by the people with whom I have worked each year.
Correct.
Where that got disconnected was, we didn't do the evaluation on last year until October, November. So we got out of sync.
Right.
So again, I'm very flexible. Whatever the board would like to do, I'm happy to have the input. What I don't wanna do is set myself up for failure by saying, "Go ahead and evaluate me now" and deprive myself of 2 months I was supposed to have, because there's a lot of this work that's not done that would be getting done in the next 2 months. And I think it's fair to say that the last month and a half has been more than a little busy with things that don't appear on this form anywhere. And so I've put a huge amount of work into efforts that are not part of this evaluation, thereby depriving me of even more time to try to get this done. So it would be, I think...
Detriment.
A little unfair.
Well, and I'm gonna say this. We've all had to deal with this. A lot of different things that we weren't expecting. And then a huge distraction of what we're supposed to be doing, including yourself. And I would think that the board, when voting or filling out this, would be compassionate to that, Kevin. I would hope so. I know I would be.
I know.
I mean, there's no way you could ever expect anybody who was conscious of what they were supposed to do this year or what we've had to deal with since August. So I understand your concern, but I don't think that we're all grim reapers up here and don't have any compassion for that.
Sure, okay.
I wouldn't worry about that.
And I think the other reason, Kevin, why it was supposed to be done in May was before town meeting so that it could be approved in the budget for July 1.
Right.
And as you recall from last year, we are still in disagreement over the raise process.
Right.
And so that has now carried over into a second year with other ramifications. And the reason why I've been pushing this for months now is so that we could try to not only get this done, but where the board could address the differences in opinion on the other issue and bring a resolution to that. We have failed at bringing a resolution to that issue. And this has now taken us to tonight, the last meeting, last scheduled meeting before the election. So I'm trying to keep to the spirit of your contract, but we're having difficulty.
I appreciate that and respect it. I think getting this piece done will make the other piece easier now.
Well, since you're driving the other piece, if you say that, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
How about this? Your contract says it has to be done between...
March and May.
March and May 1. So, and I understand it might not be fair to you if we jump into this, because you've been rightfully so preoccupied on other stuff. But it's not fair to the town to miss a deadline that's on a contract of our town manager. I'm also concerned that if it goes past May 7, we could lose input, and you could lose input from 2 board members.
Right.
And you may get input from 2 new board members that is not as relevant, because they haven't been working. So if we've agreed on the form, can you forward to us an updated interim steps that you've done, send it to us independently? We'll evaluate it. We'll put it back together at the next meeting. We'll put it together, whoever, you know, the chairman is at that time.
Yeah, I will commit to getting the comment section done no later than Sunday night. How's that? Which gives me the next couple of days, and it gives me the weekend in case I need it. I may make it sooner. But at least if we can agree, that'll give you a full week to do your evaluation. Gives Larry a few days to put together a composite form and get it all done.
Well, I think the suggestion, though, Kevin, was... If I'm wrong, let the board put them all together and ask each of us to have the conversation with you, but to wait to put the composite together to the new chairman's elected. Let the new chairman put it together.
You know what? I'm gonna say this. I'm okay with whatever you do, frankly. I heard what Mark said. All I'm asking you to do is be fair. You know, at the end of the day, my fate is in your hands, one way or the other. Whether you do it later, you do it now, you do it with this form, you do it with a different form. If you wanna recognize the work that I've done, you'll recognize it. If you don't want to, you won't. I can't make you put numbers on the page. You know, you're gonna put the numbers on the page that you think are right. So you know what? I'm not gonna worry about this anymore. I'm not gonna sweat it anymore. Let's just get it going. Because I think the higher goal is to have it done by the board members with whom I've worked, so that you can evaluate it according to your subjective analysis. It's the only thing that makes any sense.
Everybody okay with that?
Passing my sickle.
No. And I recognize there is some risk in that, but I hope everybody heard what Mark said.
Lorraine wants to hear it.
So we'll be receiving this sometime over the weekend. And then we need to set up meetings with you to meet individually to go through this prior to May 1? Is that what we're agreeing to?
Well, I was thinking that prior to the election. So I don't think we're gonna... You're not gonna cry over 6 days, are you? Or are you?
I'll make myself available to you if you want to meet and talk.
Well, we're just trying to stay in with your contracts as March to May 1.
Yeah.
If you're amenable to that and not to hold the board accountable for that, that's all we're looking for, is clarity.
Absolutely.
Because I think it's important to make sure, as we did last year, that each person didn't just send me the evaluation. I put a composite together. Each person had the opportunity to talk to Kevin, sometimes negotiate things, and then submit a final one. And so to me, you have that conversation before you finalize it and send it in. And in this particular case, either you can hang on to it, if that's what we decide until after the election and the new chairman does it. Or if you want it all put together before then, then, you know, we'll have to make it before the Monday, before the election, and we'll do that and I'll put it together. But it's whatever the pleasure of the board is on that piece.
I think you're, let's get it in, submitted, board reorganized. When it does, the chair can put it together and we'll move forward from there.
I'm fine with that.
There's just not enough time.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
The only caution I have, and it's not personal, Kevin, but we have an obligation per your contract to do it on May 1. If you're okay, could you put something in a file, a letter, that says you're okay with extending it past May 1? So we're not trying to deal with this after the fact.
Sure, of course, absolutely.
Okay. Is there anything else on the evaluation form that anyone has a question on or a motion we have to make?
I'm waiting for Jim and Linda to make the motion. It's their form.
Okay. I think we already voted on the form.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And the form is done.
Well, it's been a long conversation.
I know it has. So anything else on this topic? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just thanks again to Linda and Jim, because I know they spent a lot of work doing this. And it wasn't easy and really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda, Linda had asked for this item, so I'm gonna ask Linda to address this topic.
I don't know how many ways I can say this, but again, I want folks to be very careful when they're talking to the media. I understand that folks, they'll catch you off guard, et cetera. But when things are stated that are out of frustration, and we all get frustrated, but I just... We've got enough media in this town now on a daily basis that anything can be construed as detrimental to the town. So I just want people to really think of what they're saying and why they're saying it when they're out there. You know, again, I just, I don't like things played out in the paper. All the business needs to be taken care of at this table. And I'm trying to bring up business right now, whereas, I don't wanna put anybody on the spot, but shedding our town in a bad light is not what we need right now. It's embarrassing, because, you know, folks listen to us. They watch us on TV on every other Tuesday night. And we demand respect, but when we make certain statements that are not very respectful, then, you know, we're all gonna pay the price. So I just wanna remind folks, I say this all the time, just be careful what you say out of whether you're upset or whatever, and bring it to the table. Bring it to the table. If you can wait the 2 weeks, bring it to the table. If you can't wait the 2 weeks, you know, call one of the board members just to discuss as a one-on-one, because things are not gonna get any easier. So that's, I just wanted to remind folks. I don't know how many times I have to say it. That's all.
Any comments from anybody?
I agree.
Let's go to the action items. The first are the minutes of March 27. And I had a comment. It says the meeting was brought to order at 7:00 PM. And then after that, it says Chairman Harrington notified the audience. It was about 5 minutes to 7:00 before the meeting actually started that I said, "We were approaching the maximum in the room and that in the event we exceeded maximum, we'd have to cancel the meeting." And this implies, number 1, it was said after the meeting, because there were several people in the audience who said, "Oh, I'll go home and watch it. Can you delay the meeting a few minutes till I get home?" We said, "No." So those comments were made before the meeting opened at 7. And then the comment wasn't that we have already exceeded the room. The comment was that if we exceed the room, we will have to shut the meeting down. That was the comment that was made, and it was made at 5 minutes to 7.
By the way, that's what was noted in my memo.
Correct. Right, and I just, it should be consistent here as well.
Does the board want that memo attached to these minutes?
I'm fine with that. Does anybody have an objection to that? Okay. Other corrections, comments from anybody?
Pauline, on page 7. This is the meeting. I came in late to this meeting. So although it says I was present, if you could put on page 7, at the top of the first, at the beginning of the bottom paragraph where it says, "Sandy explained how employees move forward," if you could just put a sentence, "Jim arrived at the meeting at this time." Just so I know I wasn't at the earliest part of the meeting.
Anything else, Jim? Mark, you have any changes, comments? Lorraine?
On page 3, under the Southeast Regional School Budget Discussion, I think it was...
Page 3, Southeast Regional Discussion. Page 3, Southeast Regional Discussion.
Superintendent Loeb was present. Correct.
It was Mark, he was the business manager, the school business manager.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else, Lorraine? Linda, anything?
Not anything.
All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes as adjusted?
Make a motion to approve the March 27, as noted.
Motion by Jim, is there a second? Second by Mark. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next item is a request from Mark Logan, Foxborough Regional School Charter, seeking permission for a family 5K road race walk on 9/30/2012 from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
Mr. Chairman, just want to advise the board.
They have amended that so that it's a 5 and a 10K road race, changed the route, and so, if it pleases the board, my suggestion, if you're of a mind to approve this, that you do so, subject to the approval of the police and fire chiefs. We don't want to tie them up and have them wait, but on the other hand, the 10K part of this just came in today, so, I realize you haven't seen it, I do have copies here. Actually, maybe they got put in your packets late, I don't know.
I think Sandra emailed today.
It'll say right up here, "Addendum."
So, is there a motion to approve the request, subject to the police and fire chiefs' review and approval?
So moved.
There's a motion by Jim, second by Mark. Discussion?
Subject to the chiefs.
Right, that was there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? On that note, I just want to share with the board, I got a voicemail and an email from the Board of Health. And we have lots of events in the common, and in the past, when you'd have an event at the common, J.C.'s, whatever it would be, with the library open, there was always a restroom right over at the library. And now, with the library closed, there is no restroom. And so, the question has been raised about events that are going to be on the common, and whether or not we should require them to have porta-potties, et cetera, for the convenience of the public that would be there. And he's asked for a brainstorming session with at least one member of the Board of Selectmen, to kind of think through, how do we deal with these issues? As you know, with the, with the nice weather coming, there'll be a number of events on the common. All right, so you'll be happy to talk to them?
That's great.
All right. Would you mention that to Pauline tomorrow, then?
Yep. I had told them, by the way, that if they wanted to use the fire ground, that was approved.
The what?
The, the ground in front of the old fire station, that was approved. Now, because I was told that if you put a porta-potty...
To put the porta-potty, not to...
Thanks for clarifying that, Larry.
Thank you for the clarification, because we have had times when traffic's been backed up, and there could be some confusion. So, thank you for the clarification. But I told them that they could use that area to put the porta-potty in, because I was told that if we put a porta-potty on the town common, that a lot of people take severe umbrage with that, so that there wasn't an option. So, we said, but after I told them that was okay, I started to think about all the foot traffic going across from the common to there. I don't know that that's a good thing to create either, so, if Mark's willing to work with them, that's great, because there's got to be a better idea.
We have both some things come right in mind in my head, including, you know, there's always usually a police detail up there, so I'll talk to Pauline.
All right. Well, depending upon what the solution is, if it involves streets, you have to approve it. If it involves town property, I have to approve it. So, it may have to come back to you at some point, I don't know, but...
Right. It was a great thing, you know, I don't think a lot of people had thought, thought it through.
No.
So, it was a great point on their part, and so if you just have Pauline get in touch with Mark, work through that, and come up with a solution. All right, the next item is pool table license renewals. And you have a list in front of you of 1, 2, 3, 4 places that have pool table license requests. Do I have a motion to approve the request as listed?
I just question that authorities are up to date on, on everything.
And when you say everything, Linda, could you be a little more specific?
Randy, do we know if everything's up to date with these four, as far as taxes and...
This is standing course, this gentleman's office will review such things for present licenses.
So...
So, I presume that...
So, you could make a motion...
In that case, I'd like to approve the license, the pool table licenses for renewals for the ancient marina, Fusion 5, 3 at the VFW, and 1 at Waxley, Oklahoma.
Subject to them being totally current, and all their liabilities to the town?
I'm being told that, subject to, yeah.
Just to be sure?
Yeah.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. A motion by Linda, second by Mark. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We then have the committee appointments.
Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the board, and you're okay with this, I'd recommend you do it with one blanket motion, unless for some reason you want to separate them.
Motion to approve all committee renewals.
Asked submitted on the document, promise?
Yes.
Here's a motion by Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Any discussion from anyone?
Just double check, we're all set with, okay. There was a question about the timing on one of the zoning board appeals, but it's all set.
We're all set? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
With gratitude.
With gratitude. Okay. Now, before, on the agenda, we have an executive session, one is litigation, and two is review of executive session minutes. The litigation, is that referring to the litigation that's now been settled?
Yes.
So, there's no need to go to executive session to do that. I did want to ask the board, though, as, as the board all knows, prior to the lawsuit being dis, not dismissed, but being discharged, withdrawn, the board had asked for a report, and Kevin gave us a very comprehensive report that came to the board on Monday, regarding how we got to where we got issues, exhibits, et cetera. The papers are already asking questions about information that's contained within those documents. As I understand it, the, the Boston Globe got copies this afternoon, the Sun Chronicle got copies this afternoon, et cetera. So, since the board has had such a short time, really, to look at it, would like to ask the board if you would like to schedule a meeting for next week, where we could discuss the report itself, and to ask the town manager any questions or clarification, so we can put that to bed once and for all.
Any comments? Oh, man.
Was it the chairman?
I'm looking around, it's like a quiet as a mouse in here.
So...
So, just, I mean, it's a huge package, and I just got that on Saturday or Sunday. But I think that everybody better be on the same page, if we have media folks that are going to be asking us questions. You know, I'm...
They've already asked questions.
Okay, I haven't gotten any calls from them, so...
Yeah, I got calls from the Boston Globe this afternoon, and communication from the Sun Chronicle as well, about certain comments that were included in there. So, I think that it would be important for us to, to meet next week, and to review the document collectively, to ask whatever clarifications that we need done, and be able to put the thing to bed once and for all.
Does the chair have a date or a time?
We could do it next Tuesday if you'd like, but I'm flexible, I'm, I'm willing to rearrange my, my calendar, so that we can get this done and put to bed.
Tuesday works for me, if the board...
I'll need to check my schedule, can I email that?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I know the only night I have next week is Tuesday.
Okay. Are you available, Jim?
Depending on time.
I have a conflict, but I, you know, most of my nights are, I'm on other boards and work. I do have a meeting Tuesday, I'll try to move it.
Okay.
I just don't know already if I can right now.
You're okay, Linda? Okay. All right, so if you'd just let me know. And then, if that's the case, we'll, we'll post that, we'll schedule it, and then we'll try to get that thing all done.
Larry, if I can make a suggestion to the board, you've got some executive session minutes here.
I was just going to just make the same, if we're thinking the same thing, do them the same night?
Bingo.
All right, that's what I was thinking.
Okay. So, then if we're all in agreement, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mark, second by Linda. Discussion?